Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, November 27th, and this is the Hendrick Hudson Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion to open the meeting? Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? And before we get started, why don't we stand for the pledge? Thank you for joining us this evening. The purpose of tonight's meeting is a public hearing on the configuration of our elementary schools. Each speaker will be called up by Carmen. Listen for your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak. It's up on the board, so please try to pay attention. We have a lot of speakers, and we only have so much time this evening, and we want to hear from everybody. We ask that you come up, let us know who you are, give us your name, whatever information you can. We'll be taking notes, writing down questions, following up on whatever we need to, but there's not going to be a back-and-forth dialogue here this evening, but we will follow up if there are specific questions.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to all of you for coming out and sharing your thoughts and input and feedback. I also want to thank our cabinet members, who took a lot of time and consideration on how to best structure an opportunity for feedback in a meaningful way, so looking to create dialogue, but also environments where people felt safe to express their opinions in different configurations. So, thank you for your hard work with the team here, and just looking forward to hearing the feedback. As Ms. Bernard said, we will not be answering questions tonight, but I will be keeping track of any question that's brought up and attempt to answer it by Wednesday at our next public board meeting and report out at that time.
All right, so Carmen, if you'll just call each speaker up, please, everyone in the audience, I know that everyone has their own opinions. They have their own feelings. Let's be respectful of those who get up to the podium to share with us. Thank you.
I'm gonna cut into my three minutes. I have stated my feelings over and over again for the last three exhausting years. This was the year that I lived having three elementary schools. No matter how many times people tell me it's not a big deal, it is a big deal, especially if you want to be an involved parent during these precious elementary years. I consider myself to be a very involved parent, but the bottom line of this current plan is that I either have to disappoint one of my children or my employer. It is impossible to be in three places at once without affecting my job or my children. When I chose to do One Picture Day at BV and One Picture Day at Furnace Woods, my little guy at FGL looked at me. Mommy, why didn't you come to my school? There's times like these where I realize how valuable a K through five school is. Yes, I know we will never get our K through five schools back, but I beg and plead with you, do not make parents of multiple kids live through this model again. And everyone should know that this is not a selfish plea. Our current model would actually put both my girls 90 seconds away from me next year. I speak for future families. I attended a district meeting recently, and as I looked around the room, most of the working sheets said the same thing, and that was parent involvement as a goal to strive for. It truly is hard to be involved parents when juggling three elementary schools. I say elementary because they differ from middle and high school. Again, these are the years that they still need us and want us for that matter. Moving on, I love that Plan B gives children the opportunity to come together before middle school. I do not object this, but I know in my heart that K through two does not need this. Studies show that from ages three to six, friendships are considered momentary playmates. They still do not fully understand what friendships are. At fourth grade, almost all children, 97%, say they spend time with a said group of kids. Seventh and eighth grade is when kids find their true friendships that they will go into high school with. There is no perfect plan, but Plan B is the compromise and the plan that will allow us to move forward as a community. The majority of our district resides in Montrose Buchanan Plain. We should have the largest percentage of our Hen Hood families at FGL as a central location. There are also soccer fields and a track nearby to allow our older-age students to be more active within their space. Plan B is essentially what our current fourth graders, my fourth grader, has already done, K through two and neighborhood schools and their fourth under the Princeton plan. They're all okay. I spent countless hours doing school store PTA events, taking photos, and our third graders didn't go into the new plan or the playground with bias or resentment. Third grade was the perfect time to bring them together. I truly worry about Plan G due to space. Furnace Woods has the least amount of parking and smaller space. I also think that you're doing BV a huge injustice by making it only pre-K. It is such a great school with a new cafeteria, windows, turtle exhibit, kindergartners first and second. Graders should utilize the space to its fullest potential. Furthermore, there is no way to have a K through two Halloween parade or a school dance at Furnace Woods. There's no space for 444 kids and their parents. And if our population grows with new housing, we are back to square one reevaluating plans. Capital projects, AKA extensions, take time and will not happen overnight, especially on a swamp. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christine Tien.
Good evening. I want to say thank you for providing this forum for us. It feels a lot more productive and educational than last year's forum, and I just appreciate the amount of opportunities we've had to be in a room with other parents and other teachers. I've gotten to know a lot of people through these forums, and I really appreciate them. I haven't really, I've been to all of them, and I haven't learned anything compelling enough to make me feel like we need a change for September 2024, but I want to discuss some of what I've learned and questions I have. First of all, the amount of transitions is certainly an understandable concern, but if we were to make any change, either Plan G or Plan B for the upcoming school year, then more than half of our elementary school students would be making a change for the second or third year in a row, and then would have to make another change for a third or fourth year in a row. And I just don't see the reason why that should happen. That talk about toxic stress and transitions. So, that is a concern. Also, what principal would be in what building? Who is teaching what and where? There's just so much up in the air if we make a change for this upcoming year. I've expressed my other questions in the smaller groups. With Plan G, as people have mentioned, there's no room for growth. We have multiple developments going up in the district right now. How are we planning for bringing more families into the district? Especially if we offer a pre-K three, which sounds amazing, please don't get me wrong, but where are those kids going when they get through the pre-K program? How much will it cost to fully repurpose BV? What will happen to the ELA pilot if the teachers in K two are separated? Or even if they're changed around? I think that's a really important issue to discuss, since they're piloting this and they're spending the time and money. Next year should be devoted to getting those elementary school teachers trained in those new curricula, because early literacy skills should be paramount in these decisions. If it is decided based on all the facts and data you receive that a change is best for our district, my plea is that you hold off. If you vote for Plan G, whatever it might be, can you wait until September 2025 or 2026 to implement it? So, we can talk about things like where principals will go, where teachers will go, how will transition them? The board can present periodically to parents and caregivers so that we all have more of a peace of mind going into that. Elementary school teachers can get more fully trained in the new curriculum that they're going to teach. The board can plan for infrastructure issues that exist. How are we going to use our budget? What are we putting into the bond that's coming up? We can make a proper plan to roll out pre-K three and the expansion of four, considering that if funding goes down, that's one of the first things to go. There's just a lot, and the data meeting that everybody was able to go to that I wasn't, but I did catch up on it, made it very clear that there are priorities that they take time to solve for, and that the most pressing is the education of our children. Thank you.
Next speaker is Janelle Ethanol.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for allowing us to take this time. Personally, I do like the plan. I think B would be stepping backwards because we do not want to separate children. My son and my daughter have made so many friends throughout the district, and I also have made a lot of friends through the district. And some of the people I was in that little group with, they're from the other side of town, and we have different views. But if not for this, I wouldn't have been able to meet them. My question is, how much more time are we going to spend on this loss of learning through this restructuring? Our kids are being uprooted from building to building. Our staff are not sure where they're going to be, looking at curriculums and all the hard work that was put into this. I would love to see the money and the resources spent on building the programs. There's already great strides, as someone was saying, with the ENL program and looking at ways that we can develop programs to bring people into this community. We did lose a lot, the uncertainty, the instability, not knowing what we were going to do. And I do hear the concerns of the other members in the community. So, can we continue to build on what has already worked and what's already been good? Are there other creative ways that we can look at other districts or other nonprofits? I mean, is there anything that we can do in order to enhance the success that's already been made? I just think we've made a lot of strides, and I would hate to see our kids having to suffer because as adults and as professionals and as educators, we can't come to common sense decisions. Because again, we're not just looking at one or two years. We're looking down the line. And as I've said several times before, I believe we can do this if we do it sensibly and everybody puts in a lot of consideration as to how we can do this responsibly for our children. Kids are happy, their teachers are phenomenal, the systems and structures, the programming is great. And I just don't want to sit inside on this opportunity and waste more time and resources. And I do agree that we need to maybe spend a little bit more time to think about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amanda Katzer.
Good evening. Thank you for earlier with the breakout sessions. I thought that were really helpful, really productive, being able to talk in smaller groups with other parents, teachers, and board members as well, I thought was a really great use of time. So, I hope that there will be more opportunities for that. I think for me, one of the biggest concerns I have and the options that I want to consider are the ones with fewest transitions. There's plenty of data to show that really the key to student success, there are a lot of things, but consistency and stability. And I say that as a parent, and I say that also as a school counselor myself, where I see the fewer transitions we have, the better. Got more opportunities for kids to be role models and to have someone to look up to, for somebody to strive to be, and also leadership opportunities for the older kids. It makes a big difference whether you're seven years old being a role model or whether you're 10 years old being a role model to someone who's a few years younger. I don't think that there's that opportunity for cross-grade leadership within the Princeton plan, which I think is vital to growing leaders as they move into middle school and high school. Parent involvement, I know is something that's been talked about a lot. I have three kids, five, three in a year, and there's going to come a point where I'm going to have three different kids in three different high schools. And while I realized that it was my choice to have three kids, I don't think that's the answer. And that is feedback that I have been given, and I was honestly really offended by that. So, building familiarity is another thing as well. Our students get to know the teachers. They get to know the staff. They get to know the buildings that they're in. My daughter talks to me about the bus drivers, the bus monitors. She talks to me about the gentleman in the cafeteria who helps her open her yogurt so she can't. You know, I think that those little things make a big difference in their day-to-day, and it's exciting to hear about it as well. Being able to see teachers that she has had perhaps, you know, I'm thinking about next year when she'll be able to say, oh, I see my teacher over there. Like, it was really great seeing them in the hallway, giving them a hug, things like that. I can worry about how many kids are going to be in a class that she knows next year. I know people have said you can choose one or two kids, but it's a kid. They want to have groups of friends. They play together. So, being able to really just choose one or two kids to be in a room with for a year doesn't make sense to me. It'd be nice to have a bigger cohort. Another thing that I've heard a lot in these meetings is that kids are resilient and kids will be fine. And yes, kids are resilient and kids will be fine, but I think they deserve better than that. They deserve us to fight for them in what's going to help them grow as individuals and also as a community. So, please consider something that is going to give them opportunities for growth. I know there's a lot of conversation. This is not a decision that you guys are making lightly, and a decision is inevitable. But to have a decision made in a week, do you really feel that you're prepared to make that? It doesn't seem like a lot of time to make a decision. So, if there is an option to delay the choice in which one you're making, if there's an option to delay when this move is going to happen, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Our next speaker is James Rogalski.
Hello. I'm James Rogalski. I am an English teacher at the high school and the HHE president. Esteemed members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Trombley, and members of the Hendrick Hudson District Administration. First, a thank you. After last year's extreme rancor, relations between the HHE and the district have improved greatly. I believe that is owed to both parties working concertedly together to improve our schools. Teachers are excited to again be part of the decision-making process. Our input and feedback will pay dividends by encouraging and supporting teachers in continuously honing their craft. This will undoubtedly foster deeper connections and make the student and family experience better. This year, we welcomed the return of the Curriculum and Professional Development Committees. In September, teacher-led workshops were a huge hit among staff as we came together district-wide to share best practices for the first time in nearly a decade. This had an energizing effect, and we look forward to creating, collaborating on, and delivering more reciprocal professional development opportunities. Our professional and intellectual energy, when harnessed, is a powerful positive force. I do not bemoan the difficult decision you have before you. We are pleased you are considering plans that will adhere to the best tenants of the Princeton plan. We hope that whatever is chosen is financially feasible and long-term. We simply ask you this. Whatever you choose, please make the HHE a partner in the process of any change. The logistical realities of these changes are daunting and respectfully are deserving of our input and guidance. An elementary school teacher's classroom acts as another educator of the class. It allows for students to experience the full effect of our teachers' nurturing and inspirational powers. It's not so easy as just packing up and moving. There is a lot of stuff in those rooms, placed just so, playing its part. Teachers will need time, help, and positivity to feel fully respected as professionals and be able to quickly adapt to another new reality voiced upon them in a very short timeframe. They prize stability. Thank you for listening. Look forward to continued collaboration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lawrence Stanko.
Hi. You have heard all my personal struggles due to the Princeton plan throughout the last few forums, Facebook chat groups, and emails, so I won't go on about that any further. I think the entire community is well aware of how stressful and near unmanageable this has been for families who have multiple children in different elementary schools. So, moving on, here are my questions for you all. What is the top priority for a solution? Initially, we were told it was cost savings, and we know now that it's not true. What are your criteria to help you make a decision? What is the overall goal you wish to accomplish with any of these plans? Some plans seem to offer more academic success than others. And as we all know, equity and equality are important, but even with this plan, current plan, things are not equal. Classes are not doing the same work, and the kids are not getting the same academic experiences. They are not even getting the same social experiences, especially the second grade, who have already changed school buildings three times, and some of the fourth grade as well. Can you truly be proud of your choice once you make it and accepting of the negative repercussions certain choices will have over others? Do you see the kids are suffering academically, especially the second grade, who have had three school building changes, three shifts in familiar surroundings, and three different school managers behind them? What do you plan to do about that? How are you monitoring these kids who are failing due to multiple changes? Because it does seem no one is paying attention. When I say failing, I think you know what I mean. No explanation needed. You may have already made a decision, but... This is one last plea to ask you to vote on any of the plans proposed, but what we currently have, and not to delay. You have already done that, and it's not fair to us. My daughter in second grade is already harmed, and I can't take that back for her. But I can hope for a better experience for my son entering kindergarten, like my older kids not affected by the Princeton plan had. As has been said often, I don't see many people going through this experience or for the Princeton plan and multiple changes. As the experts I sat and listened to over the past few months stated, multiple school changes for young kids are toxic, which is an exact quote. What else is there to say? Please take that into account, as well as the countless testimonials from frustrated parents, because it does seem no one is paying attention to our struggles. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Casey.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak today. Most of you know where I stood or where I stand in terms of what I wanted. I think I've come to terms with the fact that K five is gone. And like Dr. Laurel, who's admitted he's changed over the last couple of months in terms of his thinking, I think I've come around as well. And I want to talk about the latest plan that I've heard, Plan G, which makes a lot of sense. And I've said from the beginning, whatever plan it was, yes, I was in favor of K five, but I was willing to accept what we have right now if you could make it make sense, right? The bus problem, the lack of cost savings, so on and so forth. We know what the objections were. And just for the record, and no disrespect to Dr. Laurel and Ms. Gilio, the transportation issue has not been fixed because it can't be fixed, just because of the size of where we geograph here in the district. But when you come down to Plan G, it makes a lot of sense. The objections I hear to the old model, we didn't have equities, the kids weren't together, things of that nature, the kids aren't here. Well, here you are. Here's a plan. The kids are together. We get to add pre-K and the threes potentially, which is tremendous. As a father of someone who has a student in pre-K right now, it's fabulous, and every child should have an opportunity to get in there. I hear objections now, it's too soon. We moved too quickly. It's always going to be too soon. We wait a year, those kids are going to have to make a transition. We wait two years, those kids are going to have to make transition. You'd have to wait five or 10 years for all the kids who have gone through COVID and COVID program to flush out and then throw it on them. And there's no reason to do that. If you're sticking with Plan A right now, then you're telling me that that is unequivocally the best plan. That's the best thing for this district moving forward. Yet, I hear that we potentially can't add any students or propositions to pre-K. So, that doesn't make sense to me. All right? Beyond the whole cost issue, because I think the costs are negligible in a lot of these days. When you're talking about $300,000, $400,000, $500,000, it sounds like a lot, but on an $80 million budget, it really is. All right? To the board, if you haven't made a decision yet, if you have made a decision, it doesn't really matter. When December 6th comes and it's time to vote, what I would say to you, please, bring yourselves together. Want community heal? We need to see the board together. No individual member on the board, grandstanding, on whatever side you're on. We need to bring, to Mr. Gausi's point, bring the teachers in on this. Right? I object to a lot of the antics that went on by the teachers' union last spring, but we need to have the teachers. We need to have everybody in on this decision so that we can heal. We need to make a decision now. We can't wait a year, two years, three years. Let's put this to bed, all right? Let's let the kids, you know, about stability. The kids are the ones who need stability. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Mike Rodriguez.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to thank the board for allowing us to have an open process. Also, I want to thank the teachers for coming. It shows how important my children are to them. So, I appreciate you guys coming. I just want to speak from what I've been dealing with over the last month. I have some freestyle notes that I just made. So, I attended all of those committee meetings that we had. I went to all three of them, even the eight-hour, all-day one that we had. So, the first two presenters, they spoke about how harmful transitions were to children. I think the data that they showed was pretty alarming. It actually set me back because I was getting so familiarized with Plan B. It made me even consider like, why did we even get out of the K through five model? Because a lot of the stuff they talked about was about consistency and not having transitions. It was actually to a point where Mr. Sykes made a comment where he said, "More consistency and less transitions, or what you should be trying to improve in your model, having a lot of transitions is toxic and disruptive to early childhood development," and I quote. He stated that to have some kind of a pre-K through two model is ideal for early childhood development, and having access to universal pre-K is extremely beneficial to their overall development in school. And he said that the children, unfortunately, who did not make this lottery and the children that who are in universal pre-K now, the teachers will be able to see a huge difference as they start going through kindergarten and first grade, just based on not having that. He also stressed that having familiarity, the people in the buildings, he kept on about the people in the buildings. People in buildings are important, just as important as the programs being offered to the children. Kids need to have a sense of safe, pride to being able to be fully engaged. Constant transitions and relearning routines does not allow this to happen and maximize early childhood education. When you have to continuously relearn routines, you go from school to school to school, the kids have to focus on that. And being small and having to continue relearning stuff is not beneficial to them, instead of just being able to get into the seat and starting to learn. He was asked in the crowd, is this data coming from transient families and military families? And he was definitely said, no, it does not. And he would be willing to send anybody on the board the information to prove that, that that's not accurate. Just real quick. I went to the third session. I thought it was very alarming. I was able to read some of the responses back from the children. The Furnace Woods kids, I thought was hilarious how they talked about how unhappy they are being in Furnace Woods, that the school is so small, the desks are too small, the bathrooms are ridiculous. Those are the comments that came back from the kids. I hope you guys have an opportunity to read them. Personally, me, I personally still like Plan B. I concede the pros to Plan G. I still, to this day, do not see any pros with the current model that we have. It's been very harsh for me to adapt to it, and I'm hoping that you guys open and make a change. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nancy Henneken.
Hey. Thank you for taking the time this evening to meet with us for all the research and the exhaustive discussions that you've done over the last probably six months or so. I'm going to be honest here. I wish we were having these types of conversations with this much research and transparency three years ago. What was conveyed was very marketed, let's say. I have a second and a fourth grader. I'm sure that many of you have heard me speak over the years. And unfortunately, they have been through the crappiest elementary experience, except for the teachers. They've got the best teachers, some of whom are here, and their teachers have been amazing, but COVID. And then rolling out of COVID, going straight into a tumultuous transition, being ripped out of the only school they've known. To go into just kind of everyone else figuring things out. When they just went through, they just learned how to read in COVID, right? That was not a fun experience for anyone. My goal in speaking here tonight is that I hope we can do better for the future of Hen Hood. And hopefully, if we can make a change soon rather than later. Hopefully, my youngest daughter can benefit and have the opportunity to spend three years in a school. Imagine that. I'll tell you anecdotally, I didn't even write this down, but I know one of the schools that was spoken with previously. It's Princeton Plan example with Somers. Said, nobody remembers the transition. Well, I lived through that transition. And I was taken out of one school, the intermediate school. It was short, my experience in that school was shortened to only two years. And I just felt like I was shorted out. Granted, I was going through some major personal things at the time, but I was moved to another school. I just felt like I was barely in that building. You didn't have the chance to really own it and connect with it. Because once you were there, you knew you were leaving. Long term, I want to make this district a destination for the families. Where they come for the experience, the education, the model that we have. Longer term, children need fewer transitions. Children need to build meaningful relationships with trusted adults, ones that last year over year in a place and they feel safe and stable. I'm a Girl Scout leader, two truths actually. And recently, in speaking with someone at Girl Scouts USA, they pointed out that a single biggest success factor in Girl Scouting. Is these girls building relationships with trusted adults outside of their family. With transitions every two years, we've taken that opportunity and factor away from the children in our community. Since K five is off the table, please move these to one of these models with three years per school. I know it'll be hard for my fourth grader because she would have to move again. But I do believe it is the right thing long term to reduce the number of transitions for these students. And hopefully they can have friends.
Good evening. Many of the people in the room know I am the physical education teacher at Buchanan for Plank School. I am also the instructional leader for PE and health grades K through eight. I have taught in our district for over 25 years at both three of our district's elementary schools. And I am also a graduate of Hentrick Hudson and attended French University myself as a student. The reason I want to speak tonight is to bring light to a possible spacing issue that would affect the special area classes. In any of the remaining plans that have schools with more than 18 sections. Although this would affect the other special areas too, such as music and steam, I will just speak to physical education. My concern is that once we go over 18 sections under our current six day scheduling cycle. Some classes in physical education would need to start doubling up in the gymnasium. We may have the staff, but we only have one gymnasium in each school. The more sections above 18 that we have, the more classes this will affect. This does become a concern in regards to safety and will require some modifications to what we currently do in our programs. The size of the space is a very important factor in PE because of the movement in our classes. Instead of 20 in a PE class, we could possibly see classes of up to 50. In an elementary school sized gym. In addition, some of the scenarios would include fourth and fifth grade students who obviously are our largest size students. In addition to safety concerns, since some classes would need to be doubled up in a full gym. Or have their PE session taught in a half gym and others would not. This would present inequalities among classes. This would also negatively impact the vast array of other things that are held in the gymnasiums during the year. Including but not limited to school pictures and scholastic book fairs. I just want to bring this up as something else to consider because I don't think I've heard this spoken about before. Finally, I would like to invite any interested board members, if you'd like to visit. My classes this week or next, you could get a look at what the current spacing looks like. And also be able to see and imagine what half a gym might look like. Feel free to email me directly if you'd like to come by. Thank you for all your time and consideration tonight. I do appreciate your service to the community.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mary Landry. I'm a mother of a third grader and a pre-kindergartner in this district. I also teach fourth and fifth grade orchestra at Furnace Woods. Being in the somewhat unique position of experiencing the potential reorganization as both a district parent and teacher. I just have a few points I ask you to consider. The first is the issue of physical space. I'm somewhat skeptical about the availability of space and the accuracy of the room count under some of the plans. Particularly when it comes to counselors and psychologists, specialists, related service providers. And taking into consideration the need for building and custodial storage. Under two of the plans, there will need to be two sections of a given special running concurrently. Meaning some PE classes will only run in half a gym or will have double the students with two PE teachers. A grade banded K to two or grade banded three to five building will never have a full school assembly due to fire code. The number of teachers traveling between buildings will grow. I don't find these sacrifices to be worth the omission of one school transitioning from an incoming kindergartner and current third grader. I also worry the district will be forced to make poor decisions regarding cap sizes and the hiring of extra personnel. Simply because the physical constraints of the smallest elementary building could not accommodate it. Lastly, to echo the many I'm sure you've heard from, stability is so important right now. My eight-year-old, like so many others, missed the second half of pre-K during COVID lockdown. He was in and out of remote classes with the many quarantines of kindergarten. That sounds like a song. He continued to be masked and distanced for first. He moved to Princeton Plan in second. This year has finally been normal and wonderful. No student should have to go through more than one implementation or reorganization of this plan in the course of his or her elementary careers. This means I recommend you wait at least four more before implementing a potential reorganization. Spend that time assessing, collecting accurate financial and building based numbers. Observing the school climate and the students' true reactions to each building transition as the current plan is normalized. And give the teachers more than three hours, most of which they were teaching, to complete their feedback forms in regards to these potential changes. If you make the decision to reorganize so soon after the original implementation. What guarantee do we have that future prospective board members won't run on the platform that they will change that decision and reorganize yet again? The precedent set with this timeline has far reaching ramifications. As both a district mother and a teacher, I support the plan to remain in the current configuration. I hope that you do what is best for our students, staff and community. Thank you for your service and thank you for your time.
Evening. Thank you, board, for taking the time to be with us this evening to go over the models, the plans. So as most of you probably know already, I'm for keepnesses. You know, my son, he's made even more friends in his first grade this year with new kids. In his classroom this year and he still connects and sees his friends and other classmates from his class last year too. You know, he sees them throughout the day, you know, lunch, recess and other, you know, various grade level events and even before school. I am intrigued with Plan G though, you know, I think it could be a value add to the district. And as points were made earlier, you know, it's a strategic investment really to the community. And more importantly, it keeps the kids together, you know, so I'm for either one really. And the space is right. You know, sure, so I'm a product of a K two, three, five grade banding, you know, we had over 2,000 students, you know, this was 20 plus years ago. I'm actually also wearing proof of what I can do from an athletic perspective as well. So we, that, you know, I am an old guy here. But, you know, we, I was part of two state finals teams and we were all grade banded together, you know. And we weren't, we didn't really have division one scholarship players, but eighty of us were, eighty percent of us were together banded since kindergarten. And, you know, we were all from, lived throughout the district, had wide varying socioeconomic backgrounds, but we had solid cohesion. You know, I don't know, that really helped us succeed. To move aside for myself, kind of, I decided to do some research and really what I found. Was with Hen Hood School District, we really on a team, team sports perspective, we don't really have much success. I know recently with volleyball, there is, there has been some success there, so that's to an aside. But what I saw over the last 23 years. Participants in the classification that Hen Hood plays in, two thirds of those schools were grade banded, fully K through 12. So I mean, that can be pretty telling of the success that they could, you know, teams can have. And, you know, as we continue to grade banning in the district, the, you know, the community, we could really benefit, you know, with. You know, some investment, financial investment into the athletics, top to bottom of the youth level. I'm starting to see some of it with football and some of, you know. You know, some of you are coaches, some of the parents here are coaches. You know, they could play a vital role in the success that what we could really build on for this district from an athletics perspective. And, you know, it can enhance the school spirit. It can enhance the district brand image and it could really be truly be one Hen Hood. Thank you.
Aaron Johnson.
Appreciate the public forum opportunity for public feedback. Understand you're all trying to fit a lot of square pegs in around holes. One quick point, the plans that we're looking at, they're all kind of presented without context. So it's hard to get some, to give a proper opinion on it. I know it's a lot of the stuff and feedback we're getting is anecdotal. Pros based on your parents' proximity to the schools, number of kids in schools. So it would be helpful if we had some sort of cost benefit analysis, financial logistic. What are the benefits of each plan other than just giving us the number of how many kids, demographic breakdown, et cetera? So it would be nice to have that in front of us or to give you better feedback or to inform us a little bit better. And again, I would also. Repeat some of the urgents of patience and deciding on a plan to avoid the back and forth. Give this plan a couple of years to shake out and it's time to change it after two years. And the last point I wanted to make. The pre-K, the phrase universal pre-K. I'd urge whatever plan you settle on has room to make universal pre-K actually universal. When there's a lottery for pre-K, I don't consider it truly universal. So I encourage you to incorporate any. Incorporate the thought of pre-K into any new building plans. That's all I have.
You have me? Hello, my name's Mark Wijer, I have three kids. And the change to go to the Princeton Plan affected us greatly. I'm no fan of it, to be honest. I believe the previous decision was flawed and to do nothing now would be another error. The logistics of three kids in three elementary schools is a nightmare. And even though that has passed for me now, as I have one child in middle school, some of the challenges remain. And I do not think that those challenges that parents face can actually be solved. There are busses, et cetera, as others articulated better than I. Looking at the other two plans, I see benefits of both, but pleasingly both have. What I would describe as the main benefit that the Princeton Plan has afforded. And that was bringing all of the kids together before the sixth grade and middle school. My daughter's gone into middle school this year and if she had gone through some of the things that happened in fifth grade. Whilst also trying to transition into the middle school, it would have been horrendous. So pleasing that both the current plans or both the B and G plans. Have that feature included in them and I will strongly encourage that to be kept. A large amount of time and energy has been spent across the community on this topic. And I think another few years of uncertainty is not the way forward. I think we need a plan that allows the growth of the community and the student headcount. And afford the kids the fewest number of transitions between the schools. And I think that a decision could be made now so there's clarity for everybody involved. I think as people have said, the previous decision, the way it was made, the lack of community input, et cetera, et cetera. Has left a sour taste in a lot of people's mouths. I'm very grateful that this decision, whether there is one or not, to change it, has been done very differently. So thank you all very much for your time and efforts on that. And as I say, I think making a decision now, whether we implement it next year or the year after. Will allow other parts of the community and the board to get back to the educational challenges that we face. And solving those for the kids and moving things along there. The education in the community and the care from the teachers is absolutely wonderful. And I thank them particularly given the challenges over the last few years. As I say, I thank the board for going through this process, sharing data and including the parents and community. I would probably vote for B over G, but both are better than doing nothing, both in the short and the long term. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next question is Van Keeling.
Hi, yes, I'm the parent of two kids who will enter the school district over the next couple of years. I just want to express my frustration that the board has decided to eliminate. Over half of the plans before having a meeting to, having this meeting to gather feedback from the community. That's very frustrating. And that, you know, you're gathering our feedback now and that you're planning to take the decision within eight days. So it doesn't seem like there's a lot of time to digest any feedback that's being received here. Frankly, where I'm coming from is, you know, I would prefer Plan C, going back to the neighborhood schools. But since that's already been ruled out, is an option, my support would be for Plan B. But what I really want to know is, you know, what is it that's being, what is it that we're looking to achieve with whatever decision that we're making? At no point over the last several years have I seen concrete objectives that the board or the administration could be measured against. EDS financial, I think that was the closest thing I think that we saw to a concrete objective. Was originally this was supposed to, you know, save significant amounts of money, obviously did not. But since then, you know, there have been no, there's been no presentation of any concrete objectives. Are we, are we trying to solve financial issues? Okay. Well, what is it that, you know, what is the specific objective you're trying to achieve in choosing a particular plan? Okay, these are around diversity, equity, inclusion objectives. Okay. Where is the gap? Is there an educational achievement gap between different socioeconomic groups? Great. What is that gap? How does each plan address that? And what sort of improvement percentage wise in terms of test scores or whatever else that we are looking to achieve? So that we can, we can see what, what it is that we're getting for many of these options. Finally, I just want to say, you know, I have a couple of concerns that I want to mention around a couple of the plans. With regards to the Princeton Plan approaches, that's Plan A and Plan G. I do have worries about having, you know, seven sections, you know, at each grade level. With the kids all being in the same school, there's the risk, I feel like there's a very obvious risk. Between each transition, kids not lining up in a classroom where they know anybody. Over and over again, that's not an issue with community schools, but when you have, you know, seven sections per grade. That very easily, especially if it's just random assignment for that to happen. So what's being done to address that? You know, finally, with regard specific to Plan G. As I see it, looking at the numbers, it looks like there's no room for any. There's no room for any additional capacity in Furnace Woods. It's, you know, zero free classrooms. And then finally, there were some ideas relating to additional revenue generation that were raised at the last board meeting. Specifically around taking in delinquent students from other districts. We're taking in school, children with mental health challenges from other districts and bringing them into BV. Where you're planning on housing the UPK program. And, you know, I want to ensure that I have some concerns about that and I want to ensure that the board is very transparent. About whatever decisions are made around that.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us be able to come and to speak and for everything that you guys do. So, just to be straight up front, so I don't support the current model. It's, you know, really unfortunate that K through five is off the table. I just want to give you a little insight into my day, and you know, next year, my kids will be in the same school regardless of what happens. So, I'm really speaking here for future kids. When I came into this district, it was because of K through five and how amazing what I actually, too, went through, I was at Furnace Woods, and it was amazing. I still have some of my best friends from elementary school. So, this is not going to affect me as much next year. This year, my daughter's in third grade, my son is in fourth grade. I'm the class parent in third grade, and in order for me to even do a party, I actually have to have somebody home to get my son off of the bus, because most of the parties are done in the afternoon. So, he gets off the bus at 2:45, gets home now at like 2:50-ish, and BV pickup is at 3 o'clock. So, it's actually a complete nightmare after-school pickup. In order for me to actually pick up my daughter for her to get to gymnastics, I would have to leave at 1:30 so that I can go to BV, pick her up, and then come back and be ready to grab my son, or I pick him up early. It's like an entire, like, trying to figure out the day, right? And like, yes, it's doable, and we can figure things out, but it's like, why? It just feels like this was stripped away, right? Like, the K through five model was something that I opted into when I moved into the district, and having it just taken away, it's like, why are we even here right now? Like, what was it that wasn't working before? I don't understand, like, truly, what was it? We hear all different sides of the stories, right? The other piece is, my daughter gets home at 4 o'clock. She gets home at 4 o'clock and walks up the driveway and gets in the door at around 4:03 by the time she walks up. And think about people who are commuting and, right, like, as an adult, do you like being on a, in a car for an hour? Like, think about commutes to the city, like, as an adult, how frustrating that is. And she's eight, eight years old and on the bus for that long. And so, there are times where I do just prefer to pick her up. She actually just messaged me today, and just, literally just now, she's like, are you picking me up from school tomorrow? She just texted me, and I was like, we'll talk about it tomorrow. She has a field trip, and so on days like that, I have to figure everything out. So, the other piece somebody else had spoken about was really about having to choose. Like, where am I going to be? Am I able to be a class parent for both? Or is that just not an option because all of these different, all of the different timing? And, you know, it's just, it's really hard to be in two places at once. Like I said, next year, they'll be in one spot. So, if I were to choose, Plan B, I think, would be the best option, at least for my family. What I see that creates more consistency and stability for kids transitioning inside of this district. You know, the definition of trauma, and I think I've said this before, is when something happens too much, too soon, too fast for our nervous systems to handle. And so, for kids transitioning every two years, that's a lot. And I'm starting actually to see a lot of the effects on my son, who I'm now going through the process of testing because it, ooh, sorry, it's a little emotional. I'm actually thinking that this might be the reason why a lot of the de-clandest academics are happening. And I didn't think about it until somebody else had spoken, and I was like, wow. COVID, transition, no stability, and you think about, like, I'm very into, like, the energetic. So, when you have, like, a foundation and that masculine structure to be able to support stuff, it allows for the flow and for the fun and the peace, right? And that's what we're trying to establish in our schools, for students to be able to thrive, and there needs to be stability in order for that to happen. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Max Saglin-Vinnie.
So, I'll start by saying that I appreciate how prepared everyone here is today, because I'm woefully unprepared. As I told a few of the board members, this is my first meeting, and I just wanted to get the lay of the land. And based on conversations I've had with other parents in the district, I assumed that going back to the K through five model was still on the agenda. Apparently, it is not, and that is very disappointing to me. As someone who moved here in 2019, based on the, you know, K through five model, and moved two minutes away from the school where I assumed my kids would be going, that's no longer the case, and that option was taken away from me before I even had a chance to put my kids into a school. They're both three-in-one right now, we're going to be transitioning into, you know, the kindergarten, UPK, hopefully soon. And that, again, that option was just taken away. I would prefer that we consider those options, but it would seem that that's no longer available to us. If I had to choose between A, B, and G, I guess G, just because it has the fewest transitions. From what everyone has said and from what I have researched myself, what can I be doing my own research, great. The fewer transitions that these kids have to go through as children would seem to be the easiest path forward for them. I can only speak from the personal experience of having my own daughter and son, and I know that my own daughter doesn't like making those big leaps between, you know, different schools, different teachers, different things like that. Obviously, some people have said kids are resilient, they'll make, they'll find their way. But shouldn't the goal here to be to make it as easy as possible for each of these kids to become comfortable where they are, to grow into who they want to be? And I just don't think that changing schools every two or three years is really going to facilitate that in the best way. I also want to thank the teachers who came out and spoke, because I feel like they made some really good points as well, even though it seemed to be on the opposite side of me who wants to go back to the K through five model. And, yeah, I guess, like I, like I said to a few board members who I spoke to at our previous hour and a half that we were here, I appreciate that you're here answering my questions as someone who was entirely unprepared for this meeting. But if we could, if we did have the option to go back to K through five, that's how I grew up. I have a feeling that's how a lot of you grew up, too. And it seemed to work very well. Looking around at the school districts that have the Princeton Plan, as we have now, or as it's being proposed, they don't seem to be doing better at all. In fact, most of them seem to be doing worse. I'm really not sure what the goal here is. I really need that to be communicated to me, and tell me how these plans are better than the way it was before or the other options that were taken away since the last meeting. Thank you.
I think I'm the antique in the room. I started in this school with five kids in '69, and now my last grandchild just graduated from the high school, so I'm done. But I'm really interested in what the kids, what I feel the kids need. And I have to thank the Board for giving us this opportunity. I think this is above and beyond what I've ever seen when I was involved here. So, I thank all of you for giving everybody a chance to speak and really listening. My interest is, let's keep what we've got for now, and at least try it and get some bugs out of it, because I'm sure new things can be done to make it more feasible to some of the people that are having troubles. But I cannot see where a school that is geared to little kids with all the playground equipment, all those libraries, everything geared to that age, where they don't have to worry about older kids picking on them. To me, that is a big plus, and then it can be more exciting to go to the next school because they got these bigger playgrounds and bigger, bigger computer programs and all that. Looking back, we didn't have the choices, and some horrible things were done. Like, streets were split, this kid goes to that school, and this side of the school, it goes to a different school. We never had a choice, so you guys don't know how lucky you are to have this chance to be heard. And I also am hoping that you will give this chance and keep going and iron out the bugs with what we have. And if the parents support their kids and don't gripe and complain in front of the kids, maybe the kids will be happier, too, with what they get. Because a lot of the feedback that comes from kids is encouraged by parents, and it can be stopped.
Hello. I want to thank you all for, for all the work you're doing and for taking the time to listen to us this evening. As you know, I'm still very much in favor of keeping the kids together from day one in a grade-banded model. My main message and reason for speaking this evening is to voice my concern that Plan B creates a measurable socioeconomic divide in the two proposed schools, and moving to that plan would be regression from progress. It would double down on the district bias and inequity during those three K to two years. So, if we want to grow as a district, and I feel like we really need to look at Plan A versus G and remove Plan B from the equation. I admit, I still land on wishing there were more years under the district's belt before making a shift. Unfortunately, there isn't enough information to see what's currently working or not working, and any changes now may fix the wrong thing. We could be undoing progress and creating new problems. That said, if change is necessary, and I do understand why people might need a decision, I do see the benefits of G as an alternative. It keeps the kids together, building a true community of sailors from day one, and removes one of the transitions. Honestly, it seems like a really good solution with a lot of potential, if there's space. And going off script, because I didn't think about this until I heard some of the parents speaking, I do also understand if you do make a transition or a change to one of the other models, maybe giving it a couple of years to iron out the logistics so that everyone doesn't feel super rushed in having it done in six months. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
The finalists will be open for tonight. I have Dean and Board.
I have no remarks planned for tonight. I'm actually working on our silent auction, so I'm going to pitch it right now. For those that don't know, the PTA will have their silent auction being run from Tuesday to Saturday next week. So, please come out, please participate. We have grateful experiences, and thank you to all the teachers that are here tonight who have raised our hand to volunteer their time to be a part of that so that we can continue to raise funds and continue to support enriching activities and programs within the school. As a co-president of our PTA, I'm very tired because I do a lot for our community, and I've done a lot for the past five years. And what I will say is that we need more parents involved, and we need you to come out. As much as you're not sure why or how, we do need you, because the small group keeps getting smaller and smaller, and we don't have enough parents to continue to do what we want to do for our children. With that said, Plan G, do not do it, do not do it, do not do it, do not put modular classrooms at Furnace Woods. Do not put us at capacity there, and do not put those little children through an experience that will not make it an ideal environment that creates a stable and safe one. Do not do it. And in January of 2020, I stood at this forum or at a forum like this at the district office, and I did ask for Plan B, so I'm purposely putting it out there right now on the record that I personally support Plan B wholeheartedly. Please move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here this evening. We do have a board meeting on Wednesday of this week, which is the 29th of November at 7:00 PM at Furnace Woods. We're hosting it there because the Board will be, sorry, what? Yeah, the Board will be touring the facility as part of our educational process and decision-making. So, that's this Wednesday, 7:00 PM at Furnace Woods. Actually, I'm sorry, it's technically 6:00 PM. So, we'll sit down to do business at 7:00, but at 6:15, we'll open the meeting to take our tour. Have a great evening. Thank you for joining us. Can I have a motion to close the meeting in a second? All in favor?